Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the May 7th School Board Special Meeting, Student Recognitions, and we're gonna be followed by a closed meeting. And we are probably one of our more fun school board meetings that we had. There's gonna be, yeah, so we're looking forward to this and we appreciate everybody coming and we're looking forward to recognizing all the outstanding accomplishments by our student, athletes and students. Alright, so we'll go ahead and do a call to order. Let's see, roll call?
Yes. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Ortiz?
Here.
Ms. Silverman?
Here.
And Ms. Tice?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, if everybody can stand and let's do a pledge of allegiance. That's not great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which she stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we're gonna have the Star Spangled Banner sung, possibly a first. We'd like to start our meetings every time like that with you all, but we know that's not possible. We appreciate it and we're gonna now move on to 1.04. We're gonna move, I need a motion for 1.04, adoption of the agenda. Dr. Ortiz?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Alright, motion passes. Alright, now we're gonna move on to Section 2, Student Recognitions, the fun stuff. So we're gonna move, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Noonan for recognition of SECPS choral and band program.
Thank you, Chair Gould, and good evening, everybody. It is an honor and a privilege to be here tonight. This is a new meeting, this is an off-cycle meeting for us, and it's sort of a test to see how it goes because we do have so many students that we have to recognize throughout the year that we'd like to give as many students as possible the opportunity to come and appear before the school board and for us to really celebrate the extraordinary accomplishments of the students in Falls Church City Public Schools. So I wanna take just a second to give you sort of the lineup for tonight. First, we're gonna recognize the chorus, then the band, then we have some winter-spring athletes that we'd like to recognize, then the Scholastic Bowl team, and then finally we'll wrap up with the robotics team 1418. So first and foremost, I'd like to invite Jamie Sample, our amazing choral director, to the podium if you'd like to say a few words and publicly say thank you so much for the work up here today and the work that you do every day on behalf of students. So please join us.
Thank you so much for this time. It has been a great joy to serve this city. You'd think I'd know that of all the people. It's a great joy to serve the students of this city, the families of this community tonight. Our students, we saw we might've had a smaller selection of our choir students. It's one of the great gifts that we have here that there are so many ways that they are active. So we had some at softball practice, some at games, some at lacrosse, we had some voice lessons, guitar lessons, other choir rehearsals. So it's just so wonderful that there are so many ways that they are active and supported and seen in our community. Choirs had such a great year, just this past Friday, we took the middle school advanced choruses to bush gardens where they got to see other students there ages and older get to see what's happening in other schools and other programs and then have a wonderful day celebrating their accomplishments. Our students have excelled in the different ways that we make space for them. So we tried some different things with scheduling at the middle school this year. We separated our voices and were able to meet them where they were pedagogically and it was incredibly successful. And that's one of the great gifts of being in this wonderful small school system is that we say, can we try this? And everyone says, well, let's try to do that, let's see what we can do to make that happen. So I'm incredibly grateful for that opportunity and we're looking forward to closing out our year this year with our spring concerts next week on Wednesday and Thursday. So if you want to come out and see the middle schoolers on Thursday, May 16th, they'll be dancing the night away. And if you have a middle schooler, you might have seen that choreo already. On a Wednesday, we have our high schoolers. And I hope you all got your invitation to join us for the community sing. And if you didn't, I'll be happy to forward that on. We do have in-person rehearsals on Saturday and Sunday for those of you that are nervous about your preparation levels. But we hope that through the activities of our young people, it inspires all of us to use our voices for good. And one of the ways we do that is through our singing. For those of you that saw the movie presentation from Peter and Becky Davis on Join or Die, Peter was sharing with me that some of the earliest research on coming together as community was done through choirs. He said, there's a really great chapter in the book, you gotta check it out. I said, okay, I'll get that off the shelf. But that's one of the best ways that we come together in community is the way we breathe together, the way we make music. And I'm thrilled to be in a place that celebrates that and offers that opportunity to the whole community. So thank you so much.
Alright, at this time, I'd love to welcome to the podium our band director, Mary Jo West, who needs really no introduction at all. But Ms. West, we will let you sort of take it away from here and tell our, for next, yes. I'd like to also recognize her number-one supporter, Dr. West, who also is in the back there and our super sub back there.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you so much for giving us this time tonight. We're delighted to be here. We wanna just talk about what an amazingly busy and successful year we've had this year. One of the things we started out with was the Virginia School Board Association in Williamsburg with the Jazz Ensemble where we had the chance to play for school boards all over Virginia, which was a truly exceptional opportunity for us. Sorry. We also have had the tremendous opportunity to play Carnegie Hall and the jazz and the rock bands had the amazing opportunity to play a school in rock, a school of rock in New York. So that was an exceptional treat for them as they got to work with professional musicians from New York City that were gigging and doing all of that. So the rock band concept is new to us and we started it a couple years ago and Ruby's gonna come up and play for you. And Ruby was one of the people in the class that was like really interested in doing this and look what she's gone, she's done amazing things. And our rock bands played also, as much as the band did this year, they had a Jazz Rock Fest. They played for Meridian's Got Talent and I'm gonna ask TriM to come up and talk a little bit about Meridian's Got Talent, which was a two-hour talent show organized by TriM. They did everything. They did the lights, they did the sound, and it was the entire school system that was involved in doing the show. It was a real treat. And so then we've been playing at Solos Outpost. We've been in the community so much this year. We played at the Cherry Hill Pavilion, we've played at Ireland's for Provinces, we have spent a lot of time playing out in the community this year. One of the things we started this year was the Jazz Combo. And they were also, just took the ball and ran with it, super great job. They played at the Amazon Headquarters Christmas Party and they have also been playing their own gigs at Solos Outpost on Sundays, so you might get a chance to see them. But in terms of other accomplishments, I'd just like to point out is that we have had some amazing grants and we wanna give a huge shout-out to the Falls Church Education Foundation. We are working on electronic music and just like Jamie, I'd like to pitch the concert on Thursday night. And one of the things you'll see at the concert is actually one of our IB Music students using computers, digital workstations to perform live music. So it's a new frontier for us and we are so thrilled that the Falls Church Education Foundation has given us this opportunity. As well, we're doing a joint collaboration using those computers with the English class. They've written poetry and we've read their poetry and now we're going to try to create sonically what's expressed through the poems. And again, all of this is due to the amazing grants from the Falls Church Education Foundation. We're also extremely thrilled about our 20 students that auditioned for district band, the 17 that got in on a three-day event and played with students from all over District 10. And I know the chorus students as well as our students were involved in state band, which was an extremely prestigious, complicated, hard-to-get-into, top pinnacle experience for these kids. So we were really excited that we had, for the first time, I think we had six kids in state band and state choir, which is truly amazing. So I would like to ask our friend Nina, oh Maya, I'd ask Maya to come on up. And I just wanted to shout out the amazing student-led organization called TriM. They are so motivated and they've done so much community service. And I'm gonna ask Maya to come up here, she's our president, and she's gonna tell you a little bit about it.
Okay. Alright, hi, I'm Maya Tahay. I am the TriM president at Meridian High School. And this year, we've done a lot of different service events. One includes Meridian's Got Talent, which is our most predominant and most community-based service that we do, where we host the talent show, where we allow performers to not only showcase their talent, but have the students be able to see the talent at their school. We've also done other service, including connecting not just to Meridian High School, but to younger groups as in our elementary school and our middle school through ushering and also helping them with coming from middle to high school in terms of band. And we've also been able to get outside of our local community through fundraising events such as Mr. Holland's Opus, where we raise money for a foundation to raise awareness and money towards groups or students who don't have access to music like we do in Falls Church City.
And so we're so delighted that you have the opportunity to hear the most amazing Ruby Jones sing today. Ruby is a member, has been a member of the rock band class for four years, sadly she's graduating. She's a member of the choir and Ruby, do you wanna talk to them about what you're playing tonight? Okay. So, yeah, so it's just gonna take a second for her to get set up. Do you need help, Ruby?
So Ruby, as you're getting set up, one of the things I do wanna let everybody know is at the end of each of these sections, we'd love to get a picture with the chorus, with the board, and with our band members that are here with the board and TriM as well. So be ready to smile. And make sure you get a good picture of Ruby because this young woman is gonna be famous one day.
Alright, hi, everybody. My name is Ruby Jones. I'm a senior at Meridian High School and I have been in guitar class since I've been here. But I'm also in IB Music and one of the things that we do in IB Music, there are a lot of projects that we do, we do a lot of composing music, and our final project is called Creative Music, Contemporary Music Maker. And basically, you collaborate with some of your peers and like write a piece. And so I wrote a piece for Meridian Rock Band. And I love country music, so I wrote a country song. It's called "Want Me Not," and I hope you all enjoy.
So along with the chorus, Ruby, you're gonna have to also perform at every school board meeting going forward. So, yeah, that was amazing, very impressive, very impressive, yes. And this is, it's really exciting to see the talent, obviously, up close and we've heard about it. I think what's also really exciting, and you heard from Mary Jo West and Miss Sample about the community involvement, which is impressive. The Falls Church Education Foundation, the outreach of the choral program for community sing is really exciting. Miss Sample, I was actually in the 7th grade show choir and my solo, my choral teacher told me to lip sync. I was so, I might be attending the community sing and I, yeah, we'll see how I do, but really exciting. So this is, this is fun to have everybody up here, so, yeah. Yeah, so if we could have everybody from the choral and the band program up and let's do a great picture. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I'm not in either, so.
Do you want parents or?
Yeah, parents can come up too, that'd be great.
Come on up.
Great job.
Yeah.
Pictures with your parents.
Okay, shoulders, shoulders, there you go, okay. Focus on that side, turn a shoulder, turn a shoulder, and then you can squish a little, there you go, keep going, other way, other way, darling, there you go.
Okay, here we go. Everybody, one, two, and three. Anybody else, hang on?
Congratulations.
Ms. West and Miss Sample, really do appreciate all your involvement, your leadership, it's been really exciting to see, so. Alright, we're gonna move on to 2.02, recognition of winter and spring student athletes. Dr. Noonan?
Yes, thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite up our athletic director, Brian Park, and he's here with Peter Laub, who is our principal at the high school as well. I know that a lot of our winter and our fall athletes probably bleed over into the spring as well, so we may not have too many of them here tonight, but we'd love to recognize who you would like to share with us. So welcome, Mr. Park.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Thank you, everybody here in attendance, appreciate it. My name is Brian Park, Athletic Director at Meridian High School. And tonight, we just wanna recognize a variety of student athletes and activities and programs at Meridian High School who have accomplished a lot of things this past year. I'm gonna recognize our college student, our college-bound student athletes. We recognized them last Friday. We have about seven athletes that will be going on collegiately to play in Division 1, 2, and 3 sports. I don't know if any of them are here today, but a lot of them do bleed over to the spring sports. But we do recognize them at Meridian High School in the running stairs. I think we had some pictures taken on the morning announcements. Thank you Carol Sly for taking those pictures. But first up, we have Susan Rotherham, who's gonna be going to Hobart and William Smith Colleges, playing ice hockey. We have Kira Murphy, who is a field hockey player, she's gonna go to St. Michael's College. We have Kira Gorman, who's gonna be going to Drew University for girls swimming. We have Alden Harrison, who's gonna be playing football at Gettysburg College, and Matthew Downs, who's going to Franklin and Marshall College. We have Madeline Miller, who's gonna go to North Carolina State University, Division 1. And we have Grant Greiner, who's gonna be going to Williams College, Division 3. So they are all going and aspiring their dreams and aspirations in college with the respective sport. Takes a lot of dedication and commitment, the parents involved, teammates involved, coaching staff, everybody's involved in that hard work and ethic, hard work and work ethic to get them to that next level. So those are our college-bound athletes, I just wanted to recognize them because of the, it's really hard to play in the college ranks. Out of those seven students, we have 950 students at Meridian and seven of them will be playing Division 1, 2, and 3. So it's what an accomplishment for those student athletes.
I'm also here, gonna represent our swim and dive team. And we have a student athlete this past year who came home with the state, Class 3B, Virginia High School's dive champion, Alexandra Way. He's back here and I'm gonna talk a little bit about Alexander and all the accomplishments because I had the pleasure of actually coaching Alex early in the fall season. He's a member of the varsity golf team and I got the advantage of getting to know him a little bit more while working in the beginning of the season with the golf team. One thing that sticks out is his work ethic. I talk about work ethic all the time, but Alex, when I was down on the golf course, he'd be, he'd be setting up the sticks, doing all the things that you need to do before and after practice. He would stay later and get a ride home or get picked up after practice, put in an extra half an hour here, an extra half an hour there. I could only imagine what he does in the diving ranks and in the swimming ranks. But I could tell you, it's excellence is what he strives for. He helped the golf team make the state tournament last year in fall 2022. It's the first time he made the state golf tournament in a long, long time. But we're also here to recognize what he did for swimming and diving. In 2022, 2023, the boys swim team won the state championship. Dive has an integral part into that because with the dive team, you get a lot of extra points to help boost your team's performance. Without a dive team, we probably wouldn't have had enough points to get to that championship stage or level. Alex is also looking to compete collegiately in the sport of diving. He's looking at some schools now. He's only a junior, so we're looking forward to having him come back next year and perform with this swim and dive program and hopefully repeat as a dive champion and hopefully bring home another state championship to the team. We wish him well as he continues his passion in the sport and we look forward to watching him again next season. And another thing is that came in, Alex, I know I didn't tell you this when I talked to you, but your state ring came in. I just wanna present that to you here and give that to you so you get to wear that when you take the picture up front. Big round of applause to Alex Way.
The only second box.
Yeah, it's yours, yeah. Do you want him to come up with the family?
Thank you.
You wanna talk?
Yeah.
It's about him, right?
You gotta, you gotta put your hand, you gotta show your hand, there you go.
Along with swim and dive, we have student activities, we have robotics here with Steve Knight, we have Scholastic Bowl with John Pepper, and we have Chris Carrico from Girls' Basketball. I'm gonna let Chris Carrico come up and speak on behalf of the girls' basketball program and all the accomplishments they've had over the years while he's been at the helm.
Thank you, Brian. And I've had the privilege of speaking to you guys before and every single time, I started off by just saying that I have the coolest job that I could ever think of. I get to coach the sport I love and I get to coach the best student athletes that I've ever met before. And actually, my two girls are becoming old enough to know like daddy's going to basketball and daddy gets to go coach his basketball friends. So I have to tell them that I'm my friends, I'm their coach, but they're definitely learning from them and watching them. So they love the sport and it has a lot to do with these student athletes behind me. But the girls, we had a great year again, I just wrote down some notes down here. We finished the season with a 22-6 record. We finished 12-0 in the regular season against the Northwestern District. So we finished in first place heading into the regional tournament. But a lot of times, your success in the regular season gets overshadowed by your success or lack thereof of success in the playoff time. But we made it, we came home with two runner-up trophies this year, so unfortunately, they do say runner-up, but we made it to our fifth straight state tournament, which you have to be in the, you have to make it to the regional final in order to make it to the state tournament. So we made it five straight years now. So we had seniors graduating that played in three state finals and played in four straight state tournaments, which is a great accomplishment. In the regional tournament, like I said, we unfortunately lost to Brentsville in the regional final, but we did make it as the regional runner-up and we had to travel the first game into the state tournament. And we went to Lafayette High School, which is in Williamsburg, and we were down into pretty much the whole game, especially heading into the fourth quarter, we're down by seven points. But we went on a 14-0 run at the end of the third quarter into the fourth quarter and the game was over, which was great. The kids never gave up, we came together in a hostile environment. So, you know, we were able to pull that game off and then came over and played at Alexandria City High School against Lake Taylor. Same thing, we're down pretty much the whole game until the fourth quarter and we came back again as well, too. So once again, it just shows how we stayed together. Two starters fouled out, so we had kids that needed to step up and they were able to do that as well, too. Then we traveled to VCU and unfortunately, the game flipped on us. We were winning the whole game. We were winning the whole game pretty, and then come fourth quarter, we just had a difficult time scoring the ball. But we played against this team called Liberty Christian. Yes, a private school, played in the VHSL State Tournament, but that's a conversation for, for a different day. But, you know, the kids, and it was great to see, I heard about the viewing party over at Claire and Dawn's. We got to play, this is like the fourth time that I played at VCU, and it's always great to see, you know, the community come down and support the kids as well, too. So, they had a lot to be, a lot to be proud of and a lot, a lot of accomplishments collectively as a team and had another great season. But we also had four kids who earned individual accolades as well, too. One senior, I know she plays, she plays soccer, so Maureen Tremblay cannot be here, but Maureen Tremblay won first-team, first-team All-District and State District Player of the Year. I'm sorry. I, let me, she got first-team All-District and then District, All-District Player of the Year. I apologize about that. And then she made first-team All-Region and was named the All-Region Player of the Year. And because she earned both of those awards, she automatically made the first-team All-State Team as well, too. So, that's a great accomplishment for Maureen. And then Ellie Freeson, who was behind me, Ellie made the first-team All-District, the first-team All-Region, and the second-team All-State teams as well, too. And then Nora Stuff, who's also behind me, Nora made second-team All-District and second-team All-Region. And the best thing about Nora and Ellie is that they're going to be back next year, so I get to coach them again. And then Charlotte Liu was a freshman. We have a freshman starting point guard on our team this year, and Charlotte made second-team All-District and second-team All-Region as well, too. So, you can see, like, we had a lot of kids that have individual awards, and we had, we had great success collectively as a team as well, too. So, I thank you for your time and for all your support. And just one last thing, if you have any young kids, we have, we're having a basketball camp coming up at the end of June, June 24 through June 28. I'm told that is sold out, but I can guarantee you, I can get your sons or daughters into if they want to come, okay? Your daughters, I can't speak for Coach Smith, but your daughters can come to the girls' basketball camp. All right, thank you all.
Next up, we'll, hold on, Ms. Park.
You have a couple comments, yeah, just from some.
Yeah, I want to congratulate all the student athletes here on your incredible success. I was a student athlete once, like y'all. You are bringing back Coach Carrico memories of my basketball run in high school, did not get nearly as far as y'all or as frequent. So, congratulations. I know how much time and effort all of you put in to your sport, your sports, and it's just tremendous what credible coaches you have backing you up.
Thank you. Next up, we will, do we only do pictures? Yeah, we'll do some pictures. So, we'd love to have the student athletes come up and get a picture with the board.
Next up, we're going to do Scholastic Bowl, which is a VHSL activity, and Coach John Pepper is here to talk on behalf of the Scholastic Bowl and all their accomplishments.
Feel like this is, feel like it's becoming a ritual every May that I get to come up and tell you about the great seasons Scholastic Bowl has had, which is a really good thing. And it's also really good to be here because if you notice tonight, we're celebrating, you know, arts, we're celebrating athletics, we're celebrating academics, celebrating engineering in a few minutes with the robots, which is awesome. But Scholastic Bowl, when I came up here last year, I said, I'm worried about next year. I had a great crop of seniors that are all graduating. I don't know what I'm going to do. And we were really, really blessed because I had a couple of kids transferred to Meridian High School who were great Scholastic Bowl kids at their other schools. We dug up some seniors who were just phenomenal, and we had some returning players who came back and grew. And so, our Scholastic Bowl season was a little different this year. Our district expanded, so instead of playing five teams, we now have seven, a little bit more challenging competition. But we finished 14-0 in the district, won the district championship, and then went to regionals where, as Carrico just talked about with Liberty Christian, we have a governor school in our region who can recruit from a 10,000 kid pool, the brightest and best. And so, we went 6-1 at regions, but our one loss was to Maggie Walker. And unlike basketball, where the top two teams make the state tournament, only one makes the state tournament for Scholastic Bowl. The good news is that by finishing second and having a 20-1 season, we actually qualified for the national championship. And for the first time in 13 years, we're going to go. So, in two weeks, we are headed to Atlanta to take place with 320 schools from around the country in the Scholastic Bowl and AQT National Championships. And we're really excited and grateful for the opportunity that you've all given us to participate in this event. And I, once again, it was a factor of saying, I have a very senior-heavy team. I want to give them one last experience. Their IB exams are over, so they have time to prepare and practice and plan. And we really truly had a great season. I have a couple of students with me tonight from the team. I have Jeremy Caton, who's one of our seniors, and I have Rory Jackson, who's actually a sophomore. Rory was on the team last year and did a fantastic job recruiting for us, and hopefully, Rory can find some more students next year as we are graduating a significant number of seniors. But as usual, with Meridian students, we have students who have, you know, scholarship interviews tonight and sports and studying for IB exams. So, although we don't have the full complement of teams, we're just thrilled to be here and grateful for your support and thankful that we get to go to Atlanta. So, thank you guys so much, and we really truly have had a great season. Hopefully, we get to come and say we did really well at Nationals when you get to see us.
I will say, a couple of comments before we take pictures. I think last year, when you came up, you were mentioning the loss of your team, and you were worried about some of the seniors graduating. So, it's impressive that you rebuilt the team and you're going to Nationals with, 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 yeah, it shows a lot of the strength of the program, so that's great.
We don't rebuild, we just reload.
Reload. Gotcha. That sounds great. All right, so we can take a picture?
Congrats.
Next up, we have esports, robotics, almost, Steve, robotics, and I think the students are going to speak on behalf of the program.
Hello, everyone. My name is Will Krabach. I'm the team captain. I'm a senior. I've been in robotics for four years. My first year was COVID, so I am unfortunately the only one who's been here for four years. But we've, over the years, we've rebuilt. We have many of the members who will be leading in the future here tonight. So, I'll let them introduce themselves.
Awesome. Sorry, I'm not that tall. Hi, I'm Maya. I'm one of the programming leads and the outreach coordinator, and I'm in 11th grade.
My name is Nina Miller. I'm in 11th grade, and I'm the mechanical lead of the robotics team.
My name is, I'm Ian Bopin. I am also a mechanical lead, and I'm also in 11th grade.
Hi, my name is Rihanna, and I'm on mechanic. I'm in 10th grade.
Hi, I'm Oliver. I'm in 10th grade, and I'm a programmer.
Hello, I'm always, I'm a freshman, and I'm a mechanic.
Hi, I'm Sophia. I was safety captain this year, and I'm a programmer. And now, we're going to show a little bit about what we do in robotics.
Saxons is lowering down the thread a line slightly, and another score.
We just competed in one of our qualification matches. So, behind me, you can see our team trying to rebuild. We had a little bit of a bump against another robot, so some of the wiring came out. So, we're just trying to make sure it's all ready for our next match. We get our challenge in about January, and then we compete in March. So, one of the things we like to do in the beginning is start by drawing and designing our robot, and then in like a week, and then a week later, we'll start building and prototyping, and then a few weeks later, we start programming, and soon it's competition. We spent about 300 hours in this six weeks to build a robot, and we have a lot of people on our team who come help build it. We spend our weekends here, try to make sure it all works. And what's nice is we have a lot of those mentors who help us season and give us feedback to help us keep us on track.
Don Broops and I are pretty much the main mentors. We're the ones putting as many hours as the kids are. We feel very strongly that while the kids meet, we need to be there to supervise and guide. I think one of the things that we've changed over the years is we really want a student-led team where students are taking the charge. They are making the decisions. We are advising them only and keeping them safe.
Okay, so essentially, we have two alliances. There's the blue alliance over there, and then the red alliance down here. And both alliances are composed of three teams. And so, essentially, what you're trying to do with your team is you're trying to score as many points as possible. Now, those points come from the first 15 seconds, which are autonomous, meaning that the programmers have already programmed a routine, and then that robot follows the routine. Those earn more points. And then after those 15 seconds, we have two minutes and 50 seconds of teleop, which means that it's controlled by, like usually people use like, kind of like video game controllers to move the robot. So, you can score in the amp, which is over there. It kind of looks like a box, like a trash can somewhat. And so, that one, you have to push the note into, or you can score into the speaker, which is like the big thing up there. And then, at the end of the match, people try to hang on the chains right there, as you can see the robot's doing right now. And so, if you get two robots hanging on the chain, then you get a harmonization point. And so, that helps, all these points help you with going to the next round of like districts and things like that. So, this year's theme is crescendo, so it's music theme. Like, we have this speaker, amp, stage. You can harmonize, right? And so, in previous years, we've had different themes. Like, last year, there was a theme where we, it was kind of like blocks, and you had the human player, which like pick up and throw different boxes. This year, it's notes.
So, throughout the competition, we run into like different problems with the robot. One of the problems that we run into commonly is having electrical problems, electrical issues. So, I just fixed a couple of electrical wires that have popped out that had stopped the robot from running earlier, so we had to take apart our robot to be able to access its wires. What our captain is working on right now is he's reconnecting the battery wire, which is one of the most important electrical wires of the robot. It happened to pop out during competition, and it's an extensive re-making of the battery wire connection. So, he's making sure he gets all that cracked because without that, we don't, the robot doesn't have any power. Battery's here, and this is the battery power right here.
That's the one that's connecting.
And that's, and it'll go right here eventually, and we have to make sure it's sealed on just like this one.
So, the main components of a robot, you obviously have the programming, that's controlling what it does. Then you have the general mechanics work, which is just creating the robot, like actually building it. And then electronics. You know, at the beginning of the season, they kind of section you off into one, but as the season comes to an end, obviously, the robot is all three. So, you're really, by the end, you're doing all three to some capacity. Obviously, you're still like kind of sticking, but really, at the end, it's all about learning how those things come together. And that's what I think, I think that's something that's really important.
One of the things about robotics is, yes, we build a robot, but not only that, we do outreach events. We really want to make STEM in robotics in general really inclusive, hosting Girl Scout teams, talking to new FLL teams, which is the league for about like elementary school is, and just overall trying to bring more inclusivity on top of this. So, yes, we are building a robot, but we're also making sure it's a fun and safe and inclusive environment for everyone.
I think one of the things that I've appreciated is the kids that are coming together that have a love for STEM are finding themselves, they're finding a group, they're bringing their friends, and we're trying to make it welcome for everybody. I think one of the biggest challenges is at, at Falls Church City, you know, Meridian High School, they do everything. So, I have IB diploma candidates, I have swim, I have lacrosse, I have track players. All these people are trying to compete for time to dedicate to robotics. So, one of the things that we're trying to do is make sure kids feel like they can do it all. They can support, they can do robotics and play in the band. They can be part of robotics and be on the lacrosse team. Because it's not just about your body, it's also about your mind, and we want to make sure that everyone is, feels welcome.
So, for anyone that's trying to get into robotics, I would say definitely do it. It's such a great resume builder, and it's such like an inclusive environment. And like, I mean, people, like this is my first year, and people are so helpful in just trying to get you to know what you're doing and like be able to be hands-on the robot. So, definitely, if you're on the fence about it, consider joining.
Okay, sorry. So, this year, we won the sustainability award, which is presented by DO, which is the awards that represent a team that practices sustainability on and off the field. And you can see sustainability in not just our robot this year, Mantis, but in other outreach events we do. So, if you want to see any of like a sustainability or any other outreach kind of events we do, you can check out our social medias, which are on the next slide, and we put a lot of stuff there if you just want to see how we did in our last season of well, because we were pretty successful then, too. So, yeah, that's, it's on there.
Yeah, so just one last thing that I want to mention is, first of all, thanks to the Falls Church TV studio at Meridian for making that video for us. But as you saw in the video, a big, a big event this year was that we hosted a competition at Meridian. So, we got to use the auxiliary gym and the main gym to host 34 teams from around Virginia, Maryland, and DC, the Chesapeake District. We were third overall in those teams, but we also got to support these other teams in their season additionally. Nope, that's it. Never mind. I don't have anything else. Thank you for your support in making that event possible.
Just to piggyback on that, Don and Steve, thank you guys so much for your time and energy because, and all the coaches and staff members who put in that extra, those extra hours. I know Steve and Don, on Sundays, are working at school for the robotics program to get things going. But the event that they held, Steve came to me probably last year. This was a year and a half or a year in the making to host an event like this. It saves numerous school districts money because they don't have to pay transportation, stay in hotels, and all the expenses. That was one of the positives for Steve. He also was able to do it as a fundraiser. Thank you to the Mustang Athletic Booster Club for opening up concession stands for all those people for the weekend. But again, this was our first time doing it. Hopefully, we could make it work again and block off the dates, and, but it does take a tremendous amount of effort and time and energy, so the coaching staff, thank you guys for doing that.
I just want to commend y'all for a great year that y'all had. Y'all were at Steam Night as well at Oak Street, so I want to thank y'all for your outreach to the elementary kids. I was also able to take my two boys to the competition over spring break, and that was just a lot of fun. I'm glad y'all were able to bring it here and show what y'all do, kind of with that 300 hours, that's, I mean, that's a lot of work, and I'm glad y'all were able to share that with the community.
I just want to say, coaches, you are both exceptional. Students, you're exceptional to the 10th degree. You guys are amazing. This was, this like blew my mind. I don't pretend to know anything about. I don't pretend to know anything about any of this, but, and I may not be the only person in the room that can say that, but it looked incredible. And what I really loved about watching you in this video was your enthusiasm and your love for, for robotics really shown through. And you guys are all going to go far with, with, if this is the area that you want to be in, I mean, I just can't even see where the limits for any of you would be. It was incredible.
Thank you very much. All right. So we'll go ahead and do a picture with the robotics team. So you guys stand back up and come on forward, please. I think Mr. Park, if you could hold on for just a second for, yeah, yeah, we appreciate all the students and obviously the parents coming out for the recognition, as Ms. Silverman alluded to. I think the students continue to always have an amazing experience and that's due to the folks that lead them and spend countless hours in practices, weekends, nights. And we know that extra, the, the coaching stipend and the, the activity stipend comes out to probably about 38 cents an hour based on how much time you all have, but I think it's really, I think on behalf of the community, behalf of the students, behalf of the faculty, the school board, the parents, we are really appreciative of the leadership and the, and the role models that you all provide. These, I think, Mr. Park, you've got athletic director Park and coach Park. I think that's symbolic of how we all kind of chip in and how you all really do a lot to do all the roles that are needed. So we really appreciate the time that you all provide and the, and the leadership. So thank you for representing us and inspiring our kids. So thank you very much. All right. All right. So with that, we're going to move to close. If you all want to move out, we will, we'll continue at the meeting, but we appreciate everybody coming. So, all right. So we're going to now move on to section three, the closed meeting. And we're going to go ahead and need a motion for the closed meeting by Mr. Anderson. Sorry, Ms. Anderson.
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter. Legal matters under section 2.2-3711A8, in particular consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body, by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second? Ms. Anderson? Thank you. All in favor, say yes. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Noonan, you want to, well, there is no over/under since we're not coming back to closed, or we're not coming back to the session. Okay, so we'll go ahead and, that's it? Thank you, everybody.